This TV is for presentations, so if we're watching a presentation or if some, if we bring someone in on Zoom, we'll be able to see them on Zoom.
Close the door. Okay, that's really cool.
It is.
I've seen that before since.
Yeah.
Mr. Tebow, can you close those doors for us, please? Thank you.
Yeah, it's pretty neat.
Hey Ben, how are you? Ready? Are we almost ready?
He said one minute is over.
No, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on. Hey guys.
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 Here we go.
Quiet, please. Thank you.
We can't see the intro and the glass now. That's okay.
Welcome, everybody. I'd like to call the March twenty first meeting of the Dartmouth School Committee to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Gunther, can we have a roll call, please?
Kenan Jenkins.
Here.
Mary Wade.
Here.
Kathleen Ammaral. John Nunes.
Yep.
Chris Oliver.
Here.
Thank you, everyone. Just a reminder that the Dartmouth School Committee meeting will be able, is being livestreamed on youtube.com slash DHSTVmedia. The meeting will be rebroadcast on DCTV Channels nine on Wednesday and Thursday at five PM, Friday at six AM, Saturday at eight AM, and Sunday at two PM. It will also be rebroadcast on Channel eighteen on Monday and Saturday at twelve PM and Thursday at three PM. And just as a reminder, I'd like to ask everyone to silence or turn off their cell phones before we get started, please. So it is not yet six thirty-five, so we cannot do the first item on our agenda. So I will actually, how about I entertain a motion to approve the regular session minutes from March seventh, twenty twenty-one?
So moved.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Nunes, a second by Ms. Wade. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the joint session minutes for March eighth, twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Nunes, a second by Mr. Oliver. Is there any further discussion on that motion? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so I managed to kill the full one minute with that. You guys gotta be not so quick on the uptake. Yeah. Why don't we move on to the student representative report? We have Nayan Bala, who is here to give us an update. So why don't you, not to put you on the spot, but maybe you could introduce yourself first before you give us your report and tell us a little bit about yourself since it's your first time here.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Hi, everyone. I am Nayan Bala. I'm a junior here at DHS and I'm really excited to be your student representative for the third trimester. A little bit about me, I, I'm on the robotics team, I'm on the math team, I'm a member of the science club, and I really love anything STEM, kind of math and science, and I hope to pursue that in the future. So to start off this report, ever since embarking on quarter three, it has been a really busy but really successful time here at DHS. Spring athletics kicked off today with ten programs having their first practice and their tryouts this afternoon. All sports have been off to an exemplary start. Over the weekend, we crowned Dartmouth's finest, which for the first time was awarded to a female contestant, Mia Carter. This show was truly so much fun to watch, and we would like to congratulate all of our talented contestants and thank all of the faculty members who made Dartmouth's finest possible, especially Mrs. Kearney and Mrs. Greve, who are the amazing Class of Twenty Twenty-three advisors. The DHS Theater Company performed Crafting a Killer this weekend at the Twenty Twenty-two Massachusetts Educational Theater Guild Festival. The show was directed by Gabriella Riordan and Gracie Rose, and several members of the Dartmouth High Theater Company received awards for their immense talent and hard work. The DHS debate team also competed this weekend in state debate tournament at Needham High School. DHS competed in group discussion, which focused on space exploration with subtopics including militarization, colonization, and privatization. Senior DHS debater Colin Zoo came in second place overall in the competitive field of forty-two students from across the state. The DHS music program hosted a very successful home show on Saturday. Our indoor percussion, winds, and color guard all had outstanding performances as they continue to prepare for the world competitions held in Ohio during April vacation. The DHS math team recently competed in their regional playoff meet and are currently ranked second in their conference of sixteen southeast schools. After recently coming first in their playoff meet, they'll be competing in the state competition in two weeks. Lastly, our grade-ten students will be taking the first of their NCAS exams starting tomorrow. All students completed an infrastructure test last week to iron out any bugs and get some more practice in for the actual exam. Our sophomores are ready to go and we wish them the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Any comments or questions? Mr. Nunes?
Yeah, just a quick, there was a, there was a math event here last week. How did we do?
We did awesome. So it, it went really success, successfully.
Bishop Feen and Old Rochester were here and some other, I happened to walk by, so.
Yeah, many schools in the area were here, including like Taunton, which is currently ranked first. I think ORR for Haven were, were able to visit, and so it was basically like a giant kind of playoff meet for our regional, what's the word I'm looking for? Kind of contest. So basically, all these schools came together, and we competed in these five rounds that we did, and it went really well. Our school won the competition, competing against these nine other schools, so it went really successfully.
I was curi, I was curious how it went.
Yeah.
Because I stopped in for a couple of minutes and that, and, you know, I was talking with Mr. Lauer about the, you know, the content and everything else, and I was way out, so.
But it was so much fun, yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
No, I'd just like to say, great presentation. Welcome aboard. We're happy to have you. We had a nice conversation before the meeting started. So, yeah, welcome aboard.
Thank you. I'm really excited to be here.
Thank you. And, you know, we'll always say to our student reps, you are more than welcome to stay, but we also know that you are very busy, so you're also more than welcome to leave. It's completely up to you, and it depends on what you have going on in your schedule and what homework you have.
I would totally say, but I have a ton of homework. But thank you guys so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Can't wait to see you more.
Good luck.
All right, so it is now six thirty-seven, so we can open our public hearing on the proposed fiscal year twenty-three school budget. At this point in time, if anyone would like to make any comments on the fiscal year twenty-three school budget, please step up to the podium and state your name. And remember that at this point, we're just taking comments about the budget. We'll do comments about other agenda items after this. Thank you. Go ahead.
You guys remember me? So, the only thing I really want to.
Please, though, do state your name for the record. That's okay.
I'm Christian Gobush-Solera. I used to be a student here at DHS. I try to be as involved as possible while juggling my own life. I did just want to speak briefly. After speaking to Mr. Kylie in regards to the proposed budget, he made it known to me that the removal or reduction of the parking pass fee is included in the proposed budget. So I just want to speak on this and maybe mention the three more, three biggest things that stood out to me the most in the conversations I've had with you all, just to kind of reiterate them, and I know some members were kind of on the fence about it all, so. First things first, I drove through the parking lot the other day, and there was an immense amount of damage in that lot from plows, damage that's actually been there for years now and hasn't even been resolved. But the thing is, is the majority of that damage was in the teacher lot, but yet the students contributed twelve thousand dollars of the fifteen thousand dollars of expenses in that lot last year. If you went to the plow company and you asked them to cut out the student lot, it really wouldn't change the amount that you're paying them all that much. So that's, that's number one. Number two is, it's been brought up before that driving to school is a luxury for students, and quite honestly, I think it's more of a luxury for the school. The school saves thousands of dollars a year actually allowing for the students to park here because it's, it's money saved through Tremblies and it's time saved. I know Dr. Jenkins, Dr. Jenkins, you had brought it before that, you know, that extra half an hour of sleep, forty-five minutes of sleep, when kids don't have to board a bus at six fifteen can be huge. It can be huge for teachers in a classroom when they're trying to get students' attention. It can be huge for students' mental health when they need that extra little bit of sleep a day, just to help get through it. The third thing is that this is just a simple maintenance need. This is not comparable to many of the other fees. Sports, band, they're amazing things, but those are actually luxuries. Those are things that the school specifically has put into place for the students. They have to pay stipends to pay, to run those programs, and that's where the, the fees from those programs go towards. The maintenance fees, the parking pass fees, they're just paying the maintenance of the entire lot when the students occupy it, not even a third of it. So no other infrastructure in this town has parking pass fees. The police department doesn't pay them, teachers don't pay them, you know, the beaches, the town hall, like no one else is paying parking pass fees. At this point, this is not an issue of funding or not. This is something I've been fighting for five years now, and this is something that's been, been fought since the day it was put into place. It's not an issue of funding, but it's an issue of right and wrong. This is a general maintenance requirement that needs to be treated that way. I understand that funds are lower this year than usual, and the thing is, is every single year I've fought this is always a reason why it shouldn't happen, why it shouldn't happen, but honestly, at this time, no more dispersing funds from students' pockets to pay for lighting in the lots, no more dispersing funds from students' pockets to pay for areas in the parking lot that they're not even inhabiting, and no more dispersing funds from students' pockets to clearly pay for maintenance that should just be covered out of a general maintenance requirement. There are no, I'm sorry, discharge at this point, it just seems predatory when you look at it in the grand scheme of things and by each line item. So I appreciate you all for listening to me all these years, giving me the opportunity to come up here and speak. Hopefully, this is the last time I'm up here to speak, but I want to work with you all in the future on different, you know, issues. I want to help you come up with the solutions. Maybe someday I can be sitting on this panel with you all, but I appreciate you all taking the time to even consider what I have to say. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments on the proposed fiscal year twenty-three school budget?
Good evening. My name is Renee Viera. I am this year co-president of the Dartmouth Educators Association, and I stand here with my co-president, Jody Parisi. So we have a few questions about the budget and a couple of comments. So our first question is in regards to the change in the director of teacher learning in your budget proposal. That position has been split from one director position to an elementary and a secondary level. And I did notice, we did notice in the budget that there's also, the school committee is maintaining a line item for the associate or the assistant principal, superintendent position. However, there is no monetary value there, but, but that place is being held. So our first question is that we recognize that because of the retirement of Ms. Roy and the change in the job responsibilities of Ms. Olivera, that there, in the last year and a half or so, there have been many stipended positions created, and our question is, do we have an understanding of which of those positions will now be eliminated at the end of this year, and those responsibilities and returning back to those administrative positions? Examples are the project time coordinator, the ELL coordinator, and relative to elementary, whether there's still going to be a need for curriculum leaders if we now have an elementary director. Right now, our estimate is that there's over, over twenty thousand dollars worth of stipended money going out to pay for these, what were once administrative responsibilities. Our second question regarding that is that in the budget, there's a, a line that recognizes that the assistant superintendent secretary is going to be shuffled due to the change in position. It's now going to be curriculum secretarial position. So I guess we just want to make sure that that is going to be accurately reflected in, in the instructional piece, because now that position is going to become a DEA position. So, you know, just to make sure that that gets reflected as such when you think about cost changes for DEA salaries moving on. A third question we have is relative to the ESER monies. So one of the questions we had is, one, is ESER money funding the Accelerated Academy? Because the Accelerated Academy, we recognize, was new to this school year, and there's been quite a bit of money spent on stipends and to run the program, but it seems at this point that the impact on student involvement is less than expected. So we were wondering if that was something that was going to be continued in the budget for next year or if that was directly linked to ESER money.
Another question that we had, we noticed in the proposed budget, there was a recommendation for forty-nine thousand one hundred ninety-three dollars for one FTE RBT position. This seems significantly higher than the salary of current RBT position, so we were wondering if that was an error and that that was for two positions or if it was to cover existing stipends or money for people who are already employed, and if so, who would then fulfill the duties and responsibilities of these people being pulled from their current positions to provide these services if we were going to be hiring additional people? Also, there is a Cushman special education teacher who's retiring at Top Step. We were wondering if the school committee would consider hiring two sped teachers so that one would be able to support the preschool teachers, as only two are currently holding a special education license, and that this would solve some of the, some of the, you know, issues that we have surrounding the, the model that we're using in Dartmouth at this point in time. One other thing that has to do with Cushman that we were noticing in the, in the line items is that we were wondering if the assistant principal, Cushman assistant principal, it wasn't listed in the proposed budget, so we were wondering if there was a title change or if it was like an oversight, because we did see a listing for early childhood director, but that only reflects like half of the salary, so it wasn't listed in there that we could find anywhere, and we just may have missed it, but, or, or we were wondering if the title had changed. One other thing that we were, have been wondering about or concerned about is that there seems to be an increase in sped money spent, like at the administrative level or in supportive administration. Previously, we had a director, people support services, and then over the last few years, we added an assistant at that, an assistant for that position. Other than the purchase of the Sonden system, which I know is very expensive, it was a system that was for dyslexic students. It was required by the state, and we, we purchased that. Prior to that, there was, over the years, there was a significant loss in money that was for the sped budget, and, you know, people are requesting supplies and they're not able to get them. You know, one example is there's been a request that has not been purchased for essential tools like Boardmaker for some of our program students, and that's an essential piece that is needed. And as far as I know up to this point, they've still not received that, so we were just wondering. I did notice that in the, in the budget, the sped budget has, is, is retaining the money that was allotted for this year for the Sonden system, where in previous years, the sped budget had been like significantly cut. So just wondering if some of those supplies then would then be purchased as people are asking for them. Thank you.
So recognizing that there's been back and forth from Desi relative to how ESER monies can be spent, it has now been stated publicly that ESER monies can be used for staffing purposes to apply, to be able to directly allow for services for students. So one of our questions was, how much of the total budget that you have in front of you does include ESER monies? And of those ESER monies, do we know how much of the ESER monies is actually included under instruction? And we ask that because we recognize that under budget request items that were not met, one of them was, there, there were two not funded positions for teaching assistant positions, and we continue to struggle to meet the needs of some of our students, you know, in the district without being able to offer teaching assistant services and having, you know, two staff members to be able to, to meet the needs of students in certain classrooms. And also, there continues to be inequity across the district relative to, at different buildings having different amounts of teaching assistant support, which then can really greatly either enhance or cause difficulty to be able to meet the needs of students and run certain programs so that it's equitable across the, across the district. And a couple of concerns we had relative to some percent increases in the budget. We recognize that Dartmouth has continued to increase not only some administrative positions, but positions that don't necessarily relate to direct services for students. These positions, they will sometimes, you know, support other staff, sometimes they support administrators. But right now, we're looking at, in looking at this budget, there's, it's recognized that for building administrative salaries, there's a fourteen point six percent increase versus only a five point five percent increase for staff. And we also know that there are some building administrative contracts that have years fours, years four and five added to their contract, in which their percent increases have not yet been established, or if they have, they're not necessarily public yet. So we, we're questioning as to whether, if the superintendent has made a decision for years four and five for some of these administrators and how that might impact the budget. And lastly, to quote school committee member Mr. Nunes at the last school committee meeting, one of our ongoing concerns is that we're not marketable with the rest of, with a number of neighboring areas. And Mr. Nunes said, in recognition of an administrative salary or in considering administrative salaries, that if you pay peanuts, you get monkeys. Well, right now, our Dartmouth is having an extremely hard time filling and keeping our TAs. We can't fill the positions, and we get TA positions, and they many times leave. They either leave to try to move to another building because there's a difference in the job description or in the expectation, and many times, they're, they're leaving for other districts. We're also struggling here to fill substitute positions, and we do appreciate the fact that the school committee did increase the substitute pay, and that's helped us some, but I know across the buildings, when staff is out, it's an awful lot of work to get folks to be able to cover, and we do commend staff for stepping up and, and being willing to, to fill in classes here and there, to give up prep periods, et cetera. But we also know that we have specialized service positions that we struggle to fill, and that causes us as a district to spend lots of money on contracted services because we can't fill those positions permanently. And it also makes it hard, too, because in a sort of a revolving door, Dr. Givert tries to post them, they can't get filled. We get, you know, an outside contract, and in the meantime, we still try to run the postings, and, and it doesn't, in some cases, it just, it, it's a concern with keeping services consistent across the board. And last but not least, okay, we're always waving this flag, and we appreciate your time this evening. Add to this the cost of our, cost of our health insurance, and we're not offering competitive wages. All right, we get people across the district and also within the town. This is not just a Dartmouth Public Schools issue, but we get really good people, candidates that apply for positions, and the position is great, and then they look at the, the salary package along with the, the healthcare costs, and there are a number of people who've had to decline because they're going to take a cut in pay when we take a look at the town's limited support of our, our health insurance package. And we do appreciate your time. That's what we have for you this evening, and we thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any further comments on the proposed fiscal year twenty-three school budget? All right, seeing no takers, we can now close the public hearing.
Make a motion, we close the public hearing on the FY twenty-three school budget.
Thank you, Mr. Nunes. I have a motion by Mr. Nunes and a second by Mr. Oliver. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Next, we will, we have allotted ten minutes for public comment on other items on our agenda. If anyone would like to speak on any of the other items on our agenda, we invite you now to come up to the podium, share your name, and share your thoughts. All right, seeing no takers, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is a presentation, our spotlight on kids for Dartmouth High School. Dr. Givert, would you like to introduce?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know we have Principal Mr. Tebow here, and I think Associate Principal Ms. Chavier, and I'm not sure who else they're going to bring up, but.
We have a number of other folks who are going to join us as well.
All right, so welcome.
Mr. Giott, Mr. Bosworth, and members of the esports team at Dartmouth High School. So if I remember correctly, Ben, you'll help me out. I think it was control right arrow. Is that right? All right. Thank you. Good. Thanks, Ben. All right, well, first off, thank you to the committee. It's my pleasure to be able to represent Dartmouth High School for the spotlight on kids. Certainly been a little bit, I feel like, since we've, we've been here with COVID and everything else, but it's a pleasure to be back. As principal, it is always hard for me to pick. You know, you heard from Nayan earlier today. A lot of what she talked about was just this weekend, so that's one weekend, so the, the point there being that we have a lot of clubs and activities, athletic programs. There's a lot going on at Dartmouth High School that deserves a spotlight. And so to just pick one group is very, always very difficult for me, but this year, I decided to, to pick the esports team here at Dartmouth High School. And real quick, I'm going to give a little, a few introductory slides, and I'm going to turn it over to, to the folks behind me. But actually, before I do get into this, if we could just kind of go around and introduce ourselves. If you could just state your name and your year of graduation.
So, Mr. Tebow, I'm gonna have them to come up and step up to the microphone, or Mr. Parati will scold both of us, and we don't want to get in trouble with him.
Let's just speak right to him. It's just your name and your.
Hi, my name is Orlando Riley, and the year of graduation is two thousand twenty-four.
Thanks, Orlando. Lucas?
Hello, my name is Lucas Wade. I am a sophomore graduating twenty twenty-four.
Kyle?
Hello, I'm Kyle Silva. I'm a junior and graduate the year of twenty twenty-three.
Hi, I'm Jada Cabral. I'm a junior and graduate twenty twenty-three.
Thanks, Jia. Adriana?
Hello, my name is Adriana Narria. I am a freshman here at DHS.
All right. Thank you. So esports, for folks who might not be familiar, esports is competitive gaming, and it is the fastest growing sport in the United States currently. And, you know, the, the growth of esports is really reflected by the fact that the MSAA, which is the sister organization to the MIAA, has really taken the lead in governing competition amongst high schools. And in any given season, any given league, you have anywhere from, you know, forty-five to sixty different high schools or different high school teams, I should say, competing in esports. Also, there's a hundred and fifty colleges, more than a hundred and fifty colleges and universities that actually have varsity-level esports teams now, including, you know, I, I looked at the list in preparation for this, and, you know, certainly, there's a lot of small colleges and universities that have varsity-level programs, but there's a lot of universities as well that you, you know, it's March Madness right now. You see them competing in March Madness. They also have esports teams like Ohio State, Oklahoma, Oklahoma State, New Mexico State. So there's a lot of, you know, big-name colleges that also offer varsity esports programs. So it is a fast-growing sport, if you will. So why play esports? Because I think this is important, because I think sometimes video games get a bad rap, right? But I think that esports offers competition at the highest level for, for gaming. You know, and there's a number of different games that our young people compete in, specifically here at Dartmouth High School. It's Rocket League, League of Legends, and Smash Ultimate. But beyond that, it really does align the, you know, it's a, this is a co-curricular activity that aligns with the teaching and learning that takes place during the day. takes place during the day. We talk a lot about the four Cs of, of 21st century learning, specifically thinking about critical thinking, you know, communication, collaboration, you know, critical thinking. All of those skills are employed in strategic ways to be successful in the games that, that our esports team competes in. Also, it's, they compete as a team, right? So you have character development. You have, you know, there's, there's a lot of research that shows that students who are connected to school beyond the traditional school day do better academically, right? And so it, it offers that benefit. And again, as I mentioned already, the college scholarships. I, I'm not sure what the most recent number is, but four years ago, $16 million was awarded nationally in terms of scholarships for esports. So that's obviously a tiny fraction when you, you know, recognize that billions of dollars are given out in scholarships for athletics, but it's not an insignificant amount, and it's growing every year. So I just think having an esports team here at Dartmouth High School is a tremendous opportunity and provides one more opportunity for our young people to get plugged in. And so I thought we'd watch this brief video, it's two minutes long, of kind of an esports inaction, and then we'll turn it over to our young people to kind of share in much more detail their experience as part of the esports team.
We ready?
Let's go.
All right, guys, same team comments yesterday. Matt, I want to see you play more aggressive.
Yup.
And we're running a carry top again, got it?
We got this.
Zach, are you good to support again?
Yeah, of course.
Support is so easy, dude. I need support at bottom. Block for me, block for me. I got only five.
On my way, guys, I'm coming in. I can 1v1 this Jax. I'll come help push mid. Wanted to dive bot 20 seconds. Can you guys back me up? That's all I'm talking about, guys, good stuff.
We can add, we can add. Right!
Oh, man, that was so fun. I wish we had this in school.
So the last piece there, I wish we had this in school, I just want to, you know, thank Mr. Bosworth and Mr. Guyot, because they really took the lead two years ago. Our esports team was actually one of, I think, six new clubs or activities that we created during that pandemic year, the year when, you know, the pandemic was really raging. You know, I think it speaks to the fact that we do have outstanding teachers and faculty members here at Dartmouth High School who are willing to step up and provide opportunities for, for our students. And in speaking with Giada today, she actually spoke to me a lot about what it's meant to her. So Giada, if you want to come up and kind of share that with the committee?
So the esports community is really problematic, not like among the club, but as like a publicly whole community. It's really discriminatory against not just sex, but like race, stuff like that. And as a female, speaking in like just a game chat can like result in like lashback and stuff like that. And so I think that the club here is super important because it creates this huge safe space for people. A lot of people don't have the opportunity to play at home, and so creating this space at school is super great, too, because it gives kids the opportunity to make friends. And again, creates that space, safe space, and it's super great because you make friends, and I sound like a broken record, my gosh. You make friends, and it just makes it better for people who tend to shy away from the community because of what they've heard from other people about different types of backlash and stuff like that. So I really thank Mr. Guyot and Mr. Bosworth for creating this because as we grow, we get to open new doors for more people, and it's really great.
Thanks, Giada. Thank you. Thanks, Giada. All right, so I don't know who wants to step up and just speak about the experience here in terms of creating the club and kind of providing a little synopsis for each season?
So the club is, the club itself is fairly new. It was only started last year, the 2020, 21 year, and it was sort of experimentation. It began with just a sort of heavily casual, locally, school-hosted Smash Brothers tournament, but just for a few members of the club, as again, a trial run. Then we got into the Play VS League, and that's when we started getting into the seasons of competition, the spring and fall seasons, opening up opportunities for students to play different games, like the aforementioned Rocket League, League of Legends, Super Smash Brothers, and opening, opening up new games like Apex Legends, Valorant, Overwatch. It sort of brought this wide demographic, I guess, of players into the club and kind of took the whole thing off. So many people showed so much more interest. There was a lot more people coming into PACE, thinking of ideas for the club, like this symbol, which actually Lucas created with some help of Mr. Bosworth. And even just building up the room we have right now, which I believe is going to be presented later on. It's just, it's been amazing to see it grow from three, four, five people to now a school-renowned club of 20, maybe, maybe more. And we even have a Discord server, which is growing and growing and growing, bringing more and more members into this community. Even graduates and alumni of Dartmouth High, I believe Mr. Bosworth and Mr. Guyot have stated they've made their own server for those, so they can still be active and see the club blossom and flower more, even going out of high school. And it's, it's just wonderful to see. It's amazing that I get to be part of that growth.
So was anyone here part of this? So in their first season last spring, they qualified for the state tournament and did quite well. Does anyone want to speak? Lucas, you want to share your experience with that?
Okay, I'm not sure what to say. Well, last year, like Kyle said, was very experient, experimentational. It was our first time around, we made a lot of mistakes, but as a team, we like grew, we became more strong, and we worked together to overcome our opponents, I would say. You want to say anything?
Yeah, overall, this community has really become like a family to me, and I really want to see this community grow and blossom into something beautiful. And I think that people should be really supportive of that and do everything they can to help that, to help that happen.
I would also like to say that it feels like as every season goes by, we're only becoming stronger and stronger with the more experience that we're gaining. And it's a great experience, and I feel like I'm connecting with a lot of new people.
I just want to say something real quick. They missed on a, on a big part of last season, which was that their team made it to the state semifinals. And I'll just say, growing up, I played baseball in high school and in college, but I also grew up playing video games. So I, I know what it takes to be a part of a team. I know like the, the communication, the strategy. And, you know, having played in college, but also playing video games, you can see, there, there is a massive gap between, you know, casual players, good players, and now there's a huge pro scene. And we have some really talented kids here at the school, and it's kind of cool to see them grow. They, again, made it to the state semifinals last year, and they're off to a hot start this spring. So I think that's one of the, the coolest parts is, you know, we're playing teams, like they just beat a team from Old Colony. Right, so we're starting to see these local teams pop up, Westport, Bishop Stang, but there's really schools from all over the state, and I think they're doing a good job of representing Dartmouth so far. Thanks.
So the, the QR codes will take you if you want to see the current standings. I think one of our teams is in second place out of 42 currently, and another team is fifth out of, I'm not sure how many. So they are doing very well, for sure. So they wanted to, we wanted to be able to talk a little bit about the future of esports here at Dartmouth High School, because they have taken ownership of this program, and they do have a vision for where they'd like to see it go. So I don't know if any...
Here down at Dartmouth High, we have a room downstairs on the A floor that we're starting to sort of create a, like Giada said earlier, a safe space for students to join this club. Although it is only some old computers that don't really run well and all this new-ish stuff that's coming into the club, we are very grateful of any donations and all donations. I think the club has started, as you can see, club raised money for the club. We have a bunch of club funds with homemade masks that they sold. The room we're trying to envision is something for students to come in from anywhere. It'll also allow students to come in and be more included. And I think, or I believe, and many members of the team believe, that more, like, make it more children-friendly, gaming-friendly, community-friendly. Like Giada said, there is a lot of discrimination against many people, and we just want this room, this whole club even, to be a huge place for everyone to come in. I, myself, have been working on with my family, donations for the school, with school approval, of course. We are building computers for this school, and this will just allow people, if it's okay with Mr. Bosworth, to have kids come down during PACE, coming after school, to play on these computers. They, we can run many games, we can play with each other. Again, this club is just, we want to be able to have people create more friends, be just a blooming club just for people, because I know there's people who probably graduate, like we said, alumni come by, but it's great to see this community grow. I'm a freshman, so I just started this club, or just joined this club, and I am very proud to see how many people I've met, and it's a very good community. I am excited for these PCs, excited for the club to bloom, excited to see for next season. That's pretty much all I have to say. I am so grateful for this. Thank you so much.
I just wanted to say that hopefully, when we upgrade the room, it's going to bring in a lot more kids. A lot of people don't have the opportunity to play at home, whether they don't have the money to have their own setup, or they just don't have the opportunity because some parents just aren't really super into allowing their kids to having it at home. And we really want to open up those doors to the kids that really do want to have the opportunity to do it, and they just don't yet. Thank you.
True. Hi, Mr. Bosworth. I do want to point out a couple things. One is that we do have many members of the club, the, the original members of the club were all students who competed at some level in playing the games, and they competed against other schools. But this year, we've gotten an influx of students like Giada, who, Jada doesn't, isn't competing this year, but she's still a very active club member. And so there's opportunities for, for leadership. She helped create a bulletin board, she helped create posters for a tournament we wanted to have. The student, the students who made the masks were, you know, non-competing members. So it's really nice to see. You don't necessarily have to want to compete to be part of the club. There's still a, a space for everybody. Some kids are intimidated. They, they're like, they know they're casual gamers, and they're not quite ready to step it up there. We're working on them. We're going to get them there. Oh, the other thing I, I need to mention, sorry, you can come up with me.
Sorry.
I was done. One of the things Mr. Guyot and I have talked about is you were a student athlete, right, your whole life? I was a student athlete at one point. All my coaches told me, student comes first, athlete comes second, right? And so as teachers, we are checking in with our students, making sure their grades are up to par. We, we, we have allowed some students to come in during PACE, and the room is there if they want to, you know, two students want to practice or strategize or do some club things, if they have taken care of all their schoolwork, we're fine with that. It's a great use of, of PACE time to further those connections. So again, just another positive outcome of this whole thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, finally, I just want to thank the school committee for the opportunity to highlight these great young people. I also, again, want to stress how appreciative we are of Mr. Guyot and, and Mr. Bosworth. You know, I, I don't think the, the public always recognizes the fact that, you know, in order to be a, to become a stipended position as a club activities advisor, you have to volunteer for three years first. So this truly is a labor of love for Mr. Guyot and Mr. Bosworth and, and giving of their, their time to, you know, support these young people and provide them that opportunity to get plugged into Dartmouth High School. So we really thank Mr. Guyot and Mr. Bosworth for that. And then finally, just wanted to thank the Dartmouth Education Foundation, who supported the club earlier this year through a grant award. And with that being said, and I think we're happy to answer any questions that the committee might have.
Thank you, Mr. Tebow. Mr. Oliver, you want to start?
Sure. Thank, thank you, Dr. Jenkins, and thank you, Mr. Tebow, and all the students and the teachers that presented. I'm, I'm blown away, you know. I, I had heard that there was a, an esports program, but I did not realize to what magnitude and the fact that all of you folks and the, you know, the folks last year that have been competing in statewide tournaments. I, I think it's great, and you know, one of the things that I think is really important to, to mention is that on a number, a few of the students spoke about how it's a safe space for people to go down there and, you know, all, all join in on this gaming. I think that's great. I, I'd love to see the program continue to grow. I'm sure Mr. Galishaw, wherever he is, we, we need to work on getting them some, some better technology and making sure that happens. But no, you know, I, I think this is really cool. This is something that, you know, when I was in high school, I certainly would have been interested in. So, and it sounds like all of you have a great time, looking forward to it. So no, thank you to, to the teachers, as well as thank you to all the students for presenting this evening. Well, job well done.
Give us to Oliver. Mr. Nunes?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to be the first one to admit, I know nothing about this at all. I will be perfectly frank, and how you would score something of this, who's a winner, I have no idea. It's something that with all the, is, you guys are, and ladies and staff are into. Fantastic. It's giving you a purpose, and I'm all for it. Enjoy.
Thank you. Ms. Waite?
Well, I have a tutor along the way to help me, so thank you, Lucas, to, I really appreciate, you know, what this esports is bringing to, to my family, as well as this, you know, great group of kids. So I have to say, like, it's, it's, you know, just a testament, I think, that we do such a great job here at Dartmouth High in really creating a space for every student. You know, you can come in, and you can find your niche, and to see that expand, you know, in this vein as well, you know. And, and again, I, you know, touched on, and I know I've talked with Mr. Bosworth as well, about, you know, how this is really a great welcoming space and how, you know, and as they alluded to, you know, a lot of kids come to, to find that social outlet. It's not just about playing games, it's about finding your people. And finding your people in high school, I mean, that, that's a task. So, you know, when you can do that, and I think we, you know, we have so many settings, and, and I have to give, you know, your leadership, you know, and, and the teachers so much credit for that, because, you know, we keep expanding those settings from the band, you know, into guard, just, you know, so many different places that I, I think it's really exciting for these freshmen to come in and be like, wow, they have any esports, you know, again, and this, you know, just to find these niches. And again, and, and these kids are on, you know, they're on tennis, they're doing a lot of other things as well, you know, and, and band and everything else. So it's, it's just a, you know, it's, it's great to see, and I'm happy to see the excitement. So keep it up, guys. I think you're doing a great job. So, and, and again, thank you to Mr. Guyot and Mr. Bosworth. So, and again, thank you to Mr. Ghia and Mr. Bosworth.
Thank you, and I would just, I just want to echo what you just said, because when there's not a club, I believe there is something for everyone here, and when there's not, we encourage our students to create one, which is why we saw six or seven new clubs started last year, when, you know, Mrs. Xavier used to oversee clubs and activities this year with Mr. Shea, really taking the lead on that. They deserve a lot of credit for that as well. But, you know, we just had our incoming ninth graders visit last week, and that was part of the introduct, you know, introductory message we give them, and then I know it will be echoed in the new student orientation over the summer, and then they'll hear it again in the fall when they walk through. Because I do think it's very important that every student has an opportunity to plug in in some way here at Dartmouth High School.
Thanks, everyone. I mean, I'll just echo what my colleagues said. I think this is great. You know, I have two gamers at home, not maybe competition-level gamers, but, you know, so I understand the draw of this for today's kids, and also just really how it's grown as a sport, but also as a pastime. Like, sometimes I'll come into my kids and always say, wait, you're watching someone else play a video game? Like, I don't understand that, right? So maybe us old people don't understand it, maybe I'm with Mr. Nunes, not quite understanding some aspects of this. But I do know how great and engaging it is for the kids, so I'm super appreciative that we've created this space for kids to find their place and, you know, to have fun. So it's great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I?
Yes.
So relevant to that, we did experiment last year. We had a Twitch channel where we were streaming some of our matches. We've got a couple of students who are really eager to get back there. We almost forgot to thank Mr. Parati, who, again, is behind the scenes, making sure everything runs smooth. He's been supporting our club too in a lot of little ways. He's, he got some new TVs for his program, so he just came in and gave us his old ones, hey, can you guys use these? Yes, he's always got the right cords and things. But he's also helping us do some video production and maybe edit some things, and we're attempting to get a YouTube channel, so. I would have been remiss if I didn't mention him.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, thank you, everyone. We appreciate it so much. Have a good night. Thank you.
All right, so the next item on our agenda under old business is the fiscal year twenty-three budget. And I know we had a number of public comments with some questions. Unfortunately, Mr. Kylie is unable to be with us this evening because he's not well. However, because of public advertising and public notice and our sort of deadlines, we had to move forward with the, with the public comment period or the public hearing for the budget. But we likely will not be able to answer any of those questions this evening. Mr. Kylie has been watching, and I believe he will speak to people or be prepared to answer questions at our next meeting. But we don't really have any sort of discussion about the fiscal year budget, twenty-three budget, unless my colleagues have a question or comment at this point in time. Ms. Oliver?
I guess maybe something that Dr. Gifford may be able to answer was the questions around, will the new curriculum positions be, include the, some of the stipends such as project time? And will that be absorbed by the, those positions, project time and some of the other stipends that we're currently paying?
Our plan right now is to just keep the L coordinator and the project time coordinators, the two teachers that you saw present and help run the meetings and the L coordinator. The other ones, the curriculum leaders at the elementary level, no, we won't have a need for that.
Other questions or comments from my colleagues in the committee?
And like Dr. Jenkins said, Mr. Kylie and I will prepare answers to these questions, so we have a nice thorough answer for next time.
That'd be great, and I think for my help, you know, I see, I have the ESAR grants up in front of me for FY twenty-two, then FY twenty-three and twenty-four. I'd be curious to see, like, the offsets in the actual budget of where these fall. You know, ESAR three, which is good, which is for FY twenty-three and twenty-four, we're at two point nine, approximately two point nine million. So I would just be curious to see, is that maxing out our ESAR budget? Do we have anything left?
We'll have all of that for you. I know we sent you a general...
We did.
And that's all, I think, to be clear, along that line about ESAR, that's all supplemental to the budget. It's all supplemental. That was one of the questions, and so we can clarify that one right now.
And I could also clarify the RBT position. That actually includes training for in-house staff as well. That's not a salary for one person, that forty-nine thousand. So we were training as well as three in-house folks that applied or volunteered to be trained, our existing TAs that...
We started this program several years ago, before COVID.
Exactly. So that clarifies that. But we can have more information at the next meeting.
Yes. Mr. Nunes and Ms. Wade, anything else?
No, I think I just had the same, you know, look at that clarification spec.
I know Mr. Kylie's watching.
Yeah, he'll be, he'll be ready to go.
He'll be ready to go.
I've got to sit down with him. I've got some questions, but I've got to sit down.
Yeah, other questions.
Okay. All right, so next I want to talk about the next item on our agenda, which is a discussion of the Equality and Diversity Subcommittee. So I want to sort of give the committee a heads-up about where we are, and then talk about how to proceed next. One, I went back and forth and back and forth and back and forth with Ms. Genther and Dr. Gifford, and they're probably ready to kill me, but we were trying to figure out how to post the meeting to make sure that we could hold the meeting tomorrow, right? We all agreed that the worst outcome would be that we post the meeting incorrectly, and therefore, we are unable to continue with the meeting tomorrow. So the concern was if we posted it as a joint meeting, and this evening, if the committee decided not to continue with the current members of the Quality and Diversity Subcommittee, that we wouldn't be able to hold that meeting because it was posted as a joint meeting. We reached out to the Attorney General's Office. We didn't get any information from them about, you know, how to post it properly. So the meeting for tomorrow is posted as a meeting of the school committee. Solely. All right, so with that in mind, Ms. Amaral cannot be here this evening. So I want to know if you would prefer to proceed with this discussion this evening, or do we want to wait until Ms. Amaral is available to participate? We can go either way, but I just wanted to talk with the committee, because it's somewhat moot about tomorrow night. The Diversity and Equality Subcommittee meeting is not meeting tomorrow. Those members are welcome to attend. It's open to the public, so they're welcome to attend like everyone else. But the question of what to do about that committee is not pressing that we need to deal with it before tomorrow evening's meeting. So with that in mind, we could wait, or we could have that discussion right now. And so I would like to put that before the committee first, before we engage in anything. Thoughts on that, Mr. Nunes?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I think in also, to be fair to Ms. Amaral, I think that's one of those, you're right, it's not pressing, and if we wait until we have a full committee, and, you know, we bring it up at that point in time, I'm good with, I'm good with that, is, you know, no need to jump into something, you know, because it, you know, no disrespect, who knows who votes out. But now you have, you've got an odd number. So it's better to err on the side of caution and just wait for a full committee. That would be, you know, my, my take on it.
Mr. Oliver?
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Yeah, I'm fine with waiting with the extent to have a general discussion. My only thought would be, are we looking to? I personally would like to see us reopen this up to, you know, not just the standing members that were in place for any new members. So, you know, I don't know if we want to put that out there now, that, or is that something we need to vote on? But just my, I'm fine waiting. I'd just like to see us at some point, whether tonight's the night, or we wait till Mrs. Amaral is back to say, you know, please submit letters of interest.
So I guess my question back to you in response to that is, do we want to keep the structure of the committee the same, or do we want to change it? Right, to call for volunteers, it feels like we have to know...
Whether or not we're...
How many slots we have and what we're doing, whether we're keeping the structure the same, et cetera, et cetera. So my sense is, I agree with Mr. Nunes that maybe, I don't know, maybe you think we should have that discussion, but I feel like we should punt it all until we're all here, and we can have all of those questions together. And if we do that on the fourth, we can make that determination, also make the determination if we want to appoint new members, and then proceed with the call if that's a decision. But that's just my sense. Ms. Wade?
Yeah, I think that that is a good call. I think it's, you know, Kathleen certainly also brings in expertise around special education, so it's good to have her viewpoints on that as well, and, you know, like I said, an odd number. I think we have to consider as a group, are we going to go forth with the same charge too? And I know I kind of dug up and shared that original charge that we agreed on, so we need to look at that. And then I, you know, I guess I did have a question too, and I do want to ask about the format. You know, this past time, again, we were dealing with COVID, you know, is it possible for us, because, to do working groups, you know, as well as, so those are some of the questions I have, just in terms, because if I look at the charge, there's a lot of real work that needs to be done, and it's difficult to do some of that work in a, you know, ten, twelve-person committee. So it may be helpful in some cases to have some working groups that then bring back some conclusions. So again, those are all questions. I just don't know that...
I'm just, I'm just going to start to laugh, because I'm looking at my watch, and in about three weeks, I am no longer chair of the school committee. So I'm just going to say that the Diversity and Equality Subcommittee is a subcommittee of the school committee. Therefore, it is subject to open meeting laws. So if there are working groups of that subcommittee, and there are more than two people on those working groups, those working groups are subject to open meeting law. That will be hashtag not my problem in three weeks. But I just want to know that, that all of this must be done in a fully open and transparent way, because it is, we are subject to open meeting law. So working groups are somewhat difficult, because we are limited to just two people. And then you lose the idea of having a variety of viewpoints there. We can discuss that, and that's something maybe the subcommittee may decide, whatever forum it's in, but it gets really complicated really fast.
And Dr. Gifford, I have a question too, you know, as I look at, because again, a lot of the charge, and we can revisit this, so I'm not, you know, having a full discussion now, but we have this, but it does seem as though it would be important for our curriculum folks, at least to be, you know, on, serving in some capacity, these new curriculum folks, if, because a lot of what we're talking about here is curriculum and practices. And so, you know, that's a, that's a question too. Those people haven't been hired, they don't have the opportunity yet to, you know, put a letter in. But again, as we kind of consider forward, I would imagine, if they're talking about curriculum systemically, and they're going to bring it back to the teachers, that they would be important folks, you know, just by virtue of their position. So unless we're talking about something separate coming from your office, in that being, but...
I mean, any curriculum model units changes, as you know, over the last years and years it takes to develop. Desi puts out new standards, et cetera, et cetera, so it is a huge, huge project.
Mr. Nunes?
Yeah, thank you. I was just going, I was going to kind of echo what the superintendent just said, that if you're going to get into curriculum, then somewhere down the line, you're going to need some feedback from those two new, you know, the people that are in that position, only because it's not that subcommittee's position.
It's not our position. Right, we don't, we don't, as a school committee, we don't dictate curriculum, right? So we might make a recommendation.
I was going with this, you know, going back to what's in that subcommittee charge.
And that's where I'm, yeah.
A little, we're kind of getting into a real gray, stepping-on-toes area, plain and simple. Okay, so we may have to look at that charge.
There's, there's three things that we then, that we need to decide next. We're going to look at the charge with Mary sent around, so we can all look at that prior to the next meeting. The structure of the committee, which right now we have two administrators, three staff...
Couple of students.
Two school committee members, two students, and two community members. Yeah, so we should think about that, about what the structure of that will be. And then I think once we have those two things in place, then we can have the, get to that third issue, which is, do we reappoint, or do we do another call? Does that make sense? So we'll do all that, we'll put that on our agenda for our next meeting.
Yep, that's fine.
Okay. All right, so moving on to new business, superintendent's update.
Hey, I don't have too much to this, this week, but I did want to mention that the middle school has started a unified, some unified athletics programs as the high school. So I know they have a basketball game coming up this Friday, so it'll be fun to see how that evolves. I do want to mention again about the high school, what Mr. Tebow said about so many teachers come forth asking to start these clubs and whatnot, and the work that's involved before they, it's just, you saw the middle school Legos and the engineering and all of that last time, and it was the same kind of thing a number of years ago, so it's just great. We did interview for the, excuse me, we did post for the director positions, and we've got a team of folks that we'll be interviewing next week for those positions. And also, I think you, I might have mentioned at another meeting that our registrar in central office had resigned. She gave her two weeks' notice two weeks ago, and we immediately posted that position. So we have a number of candidates we'll be interviewing starting tomorrow for that. We wanted to fill it as fast as possible. It's a really tough time. We were in the same position last year, right at this time, so it's tough. And then just, we got this, so I brought this along, I sent it to the principals at the schools. It was from one of our juniors, Hannah Lima, here at the high school, and she's Miss New Bedford's outstanding teen of twenty-twenty-two. So she sent a letter asking that she, we, we share her project that she's going to be doing, and it's about an act of kindness, Official Day of Kindness. Maya Mitchell has taken it on in New Bedford as well. So we sent it off to the schools and asked that on April one, that on that Official Day of Kindness, that each school takes on some kind of a project, which I know, we always talk about like a Cushman and Pot, all the schools now do the kindness challenges, et cetera. So this will just be an added incentive for them to do something special, so.
Bonnie, if I could just, like, I noticed that the middle school is actually doing a clothing run too. So, and it ends on people first, so that's kind of a nice little...
Lot of things, lot of things going on for kindness and...
Yeah, it's very nice.
So, anyway, that's, that's about it for this week.
All right, so the next item on the agenda, I don't really have a report, but we do have one other item, other matter that may not have been anticipated at the time of the agenda posting. And that is you all received, it's normally under our consent agenda, for DECA. We had four students qualify for nationals, and so we are seeking approval of the trip for those students to, I believe it is Georgia.
Atlanta, Georgia.
I will entertain a motion to approve.
With pleasure.
Yes, I'm biased though, but yes.
Second.
All right, so I have a motion by Mr. Nunes and a second by Mr. Oliver. Is there any further discussion on the, the motion?
Good luck and bring us back some trophies.
Good luck to our DECA students. All right, hearing no further discussion, all in, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimously. Are there any other items that the committee would like to share? I always look to Mr. Nunes, he has something, but he's taking notes, so I'll go to Mr. Oliver next.
No, thank you, Madam Chair. I know the committee, I believe the committee had received a letter from the Chappaquiddick tribe that asked to be placed into record. It was sent in after last week's, two weeks ago's forum. So if it was okay with you, Madam Chair, I'd just like to read it into the record.
Sure.
Thank you. So attention, Superintendent, Ms. Bonnie Gifford and Secretary, Ms. Kathleen Genther. Greetings to all into whom it may concern. We, the Chappaquiddick Tribe of the Pokonoket Nation, stand in unified support with our brothers and sisters of the Pokonoket Federation-affiliated tribes. The Chappaquiddick Tribe feels that the Dartmouth mascot in question should remain. While we recognize the controversy that surrounds this issue, we, the Chappaquiddick Peoples, in no way feel that this mascot is derogatory or inflammatory. In fact, given the nature as to its inception and creation by an Aquina tribal member, we concur that the symbolism is an accurate depiction of our eastern peoples. In an area of cancellation, it is important to judge all matters concerning cultural appropriation with discernment, wisdom, and compassion. We stand in support of the Wampanoag Tribe of Gayhead Aquinor. Sincerely, and I'm just going to say, the chief of the Chappaquiddick Tribe of the Pokonoket Nation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and that actually reminds me, Mr. Oliver, I just wanted to run by you just sort of protocols for tomorrow evening, reconfirming what we agreed on. So we will start, we agreed sort of a little bit longer, one person on each side. I spoke with, to start off the evening, I spoke with Mr. Carney when he was here at the last meeting, and he agreed to sort of kick off that side, his side with about, as we said, about ten minutes. I think Dr. Hall, a Dartmouth resident from the NAACP, will do the other side, and then we'll open up for general public comment. I spoke with Mr. Galishaw. He's going to be able to run a timer. I appreciate this, that... that the people speaking will be able to see because sometimes when you're speaking, you don't realize how long you're talking.
That's great.
It will be in their eyesight. It will have a two-minute timer, but we're not going to like eh. It will just be, I think, a visual indicator to everyone to sort of, your time's about up. And then after, if after like another minute, they haven't finished up, then I think we'll, you know, sort of intervene to, and the idea is, is by setting a sort of a two to three-minute limit for public comments, it will allow us to maximize sort of the number of people that we are, that we are able to speak tomorrow evening. Because I know we're anticipating a large number of people there. The intention was to sort of alternate between sides. If the lines are different, we can, we can sort of vary from that. Mr. Nunes?
What I was thinking, as I've been thinking about this, is why don't we open the microphones on both sides to whomever? Okay? We don't need, you know, you, you know, the first person can be on this side and say, I'm in favor, this one against. And then the next person over here is, well, I'm against. And then this one's, whatever side they're on, it'll make it a lot easier as they're trying to get out of their seats into the aisles and go from there, number one. Number two, are we only listening to Dartmouth residents as this is a Dartmouth issue?
I do not think so. I'm not sure.
Okay. I mean, this is a Dartmouth question. Okay?
I don't, I don't necessarily agree with that issue.
With all due respect, we don't need somebody coming down here from Boston or Eastovershue to tell us how to, or what we should be doing. This is, this is a, this is a Dartmouth issue. It's, it's no different than when I sat here and said, we should have, aside from our faculty and administrators type of deal, but whoever the at-large people were, they were going to be Dartmouth residents because this is a Dartmouth issue.
You're welcome to make a motion. I respectfully disagree with that position because our teams do travel to other communities and they do wear that name on their, their uniforms and we are announced as such in other communities. That having been said, I am one member of this committee, right? As it stands, there are no restrictions on who can speak. Any member of this committee is welcome to make a motion and we can have a vote on that.
So, I guess my question is, at the very least, I think it's important that whoever comes up to the microphone and maybe this goes without saying, that they state their name and where they're from.
Absolutely. 100% agree. Yeah. 100% absolutely agree on that. I also, I also plan to ask everyone to be respectful. Right? I know people are very heated about this issue. We are all in opposition on different sides, but I still think that people who could disagree can speak respectfully about an issue and I expect members of our community to follow that, that example.
We can all agree to disagree.
Agree. And I will also say that I'm going to, I, I will say this, maybe I'll ask you about this, that if things do get disrespectful, that's it?
The meeting's over.
That's it.
As simple as that.
Right. So, people need to be respectful tomorrow. They'll have their two to three minutes to say their comments, to tell us what they, what they think and everyone needs to be respectful of everyone else's opinions. So, on the issue of, I do agree, everyone needs to state their name and where they reside. Mr. Nunes, if you would like to make that motion, I will, we can, we can vote on that motion. That's fine.
Now, kind of sit and wait and see what happens tomorrow night.
Okay. We can make that motion as well.
Since it's, since it is our meeting.
Correct. But I think, I think we're sort of all in agreement on sort of what the ground rules are for tomorrow night. And so, that's fine.
Like I said, I mean, again, if you just, instead of, you know, everybody sitting, oh, yeah, there again, just let them, whatever side of the microphone they wish to go to, let them. And it's not, you're not picking sides or anything of that nature. That, that's my fault. That's, that's the way to do it, I think.
So.
Probably make things flow easier.
My only other question for you all is that we spoke last time about setting sort of an end of, end of meeting target.
Yes.
Right? Like, I don't think we want to be here till 11:30 at night. Agreed? Are we in agreement?
Agreed.
So, my sense is that about 8:30, we say, okay, we're going to have X. If there's still people, we're going to say we have five more, three more.
We shoot for 8 o'clock and then we're done for 8:30.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we should have a hard stop time announced.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, you know, shoot for eight to be finished at 8:30 and 8:30.
Hard stop at 8:30.
Hard stop at 8:30.
8:30 is the hard stop.
Add a time.
Okay. I just wanted to check in with you to make sure we're all on the same page about how to proceed tomorrow. Okay. Are there any other items anyone wishes to share? Mr. Nunes?
Yeah, I have two things. Number one, we've got the spelling bee Thursday night.
Oh, yes. Thank you.
I already paid my bill. Thank you.
Oh, yes. I keep forgetting. We, we can go online. I will be there. Thank you, Mr. Nunes.
DF site.
Yeah. All right. So, yeah, so just Google Dartmouth Education Foundation and we can put in our check. I believe Dr. Gifford is going to be spelling on Thursday evening.
Or at least showing up.
There we go. And also too, and also.
Depending on my teammates.
Yeah, just, again, just thanks to everyone. Mr. Tebow and Mrs. Xavier and Dr. Gifford that helped, helped us hand out awards Saturday at our home show. We had a good crowd and a good time. And good luck to our music department. The indoor percussion and winds are headed to New Jersey on Friday after school and the color guides headed to Pennsylvania, Pennsylvania. So, busy weekend with regionals.
Yeah, they come in at 5 o'clock in the morning on a Sunday morning. So.
Thank you, Mr. Nunes. Ms. Wade, did you have something that you'd like to add?
Yeah, I was just going to, to mention that the junior achievement program is coming into the schools in May, which is, you know, rather exciting and they're, you know, canvassing community members to come in as well as it sounds like some students as well. So, I'm going to be teaching all five, wait, one, two. I mean, all the fifth grades. Teaching all the fifth grades. So, so I'm excited to do that. I loved, I loved it. So, it's such a great program. I'm glad to see, I was at Potter. I'm glad to see it. It was a hard stop with COVID, but I'm glad to see it coming in and it's, it's really exciting to know that, you know, they're going to have those days. I think there's a day designated for each school. So, it's exciting.
Excellent. Thank you. Anything else? So, our next meeting is our public comment meeting on the 22nd. Our next regular meeting is on the 4th of April.
April 4th. Yep.
All right. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right. I have a motion by Mr. Nunes, a second by Ms. Wade. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Good night, everyone.
Good night.